Right, it is Thursday, August thirty first, seven o'clock. We're calling this meeting of the Timmer Select Board to order. Welcome, everyone. First, we'll review the agenda. Do we need to move anything around tonight?
I don't believe all of us should be here.
Okay.
I think once for me.
Yeah.
September.
Great. All right, we can view the minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but I was saying, I didn't vote no, that's right. And I remember that after. I think he was, they need to be.
Yeah.
Well, other than that, I didn't see any issues from what I remember.
No, I think they read.
Good catch.
With.
Like, no, stick some Batmans in there or something.
I skim over the minutes.
The trick is every so once in a while, she'll purposely have a typo in there, which you have to try to find like. And it's the end. That means I just could have missed it. All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Do I make a motion?
To approve with that amendment.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the minutes with the abstaining with the correction.
Correction.
And yeah.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Lovely. All right.
Sorry, I wasn't ready.
Citizens input. Anybody online have anything to contribute? Okay. Public Works. You said that. The old RFP, did we?
Did not send anyone.
Yeah, I remember seeing it.
Um, this is the vast one. I'm not quite sure in what order things need to be.
Yeah.
What Kevin sent me for an RFP was more like a bid.
So I didn't know how to do it.
I just took it and.
No, I really appreciate you doing that because I had no idea how to do that.
So I think the Hermotex, and that's spelled wrong. Hermotex goes.
After the degrees.
Number four.
So it should be.
It should be number three.
Yep.
And three will be four and then. Five will be painting.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and then, so I don't think that.
My question there was, do we want them to repair any holes or damage?
The thing is that I would, only because I know how to. Anybody that's gonna bid to paint it probably isn't gonna know how to.
Well, that's what you want. You need to put in this what your expectations are. And if you don't want them to do it, then.
Do we want two prices, one with repairing the damages and one without?
Much damage is there?
I don't think there's the only thing, the only damage. Siding, I believe, is fine, except for the bottom is rusting. Um, and that is just the. Proper get the right way to seal it, so it will. Slow it down or hopefully stop it. The only damage to it is that door in the back and the. Um, and a couple of corners are a little wonky. Um.
So was that door gonna get replaced or what was gonna happen with it? Okay. Well, there were some repairs you guys were supposed to do. Did you know there's done?
Not yet.
Not that.
Um, so I think the corners can be kind of fixed up with some self tappers and a screw gun. Can kind of straighten it up a little bit. And make it look a little bit better. So there really isn't, as far as the siding is concerned, there really isn't any. Damage.
Do they need to repair the damage in order to paint it? Can they paint it?
Being painted with the damage.
And then, because I feel like it's harder for someone to bid on something without seeing what damage. Like this, you could probably bid on the painting. Easier without like damage is an unknown. So how do you price that in?
Well.
Well, they would have to come and look at it before they make a bid anyway. So they go to see it and they have a question and we. We have an answer.
For them to Kevin.
I was gonna say, do we wanna say approximately how many square feet they're painting, thinking or? The size of the building?
Yeah.
Forty by sixty?
It's a weird number. It's seventy-two, I think. I think it's thirty-six seventy-two. But I'm not. It was in my head, but it doesn't.
Could include it in that first sentence in the special board.
Does anybody have any idea who I can send this to?
Um.
So you could find it's the Eaton's. I don't know who else.
Yeah, magic brush and that one.
So. Um.
There's someone in Wallingford painting that building. I don't know who they are.
I. Put it out in the front porch forum. I'd put it out. We don't have enough time to do tails.
Yeah, sales is coming out next week.
Okay.
Don't have a week to figure that.
And do the tails. Um. As far as the advertising, I think that's about it.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know any painting. Companies.
Magic brush.
Magic brush.
Yeah. The only ones I'm thinking of are painting steel trusses. We probably don't want that. I'll give it expensive.
From a building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's big time expensive.
Maybe they do stuff like this. I don't know. Well, chances are it's late in the year. Everybody's all booked. They might not fund any, but I think it's worth the board's effort to be transparent about it and say, hey, you have to find somebody that you can just hire one of those. Now. We want it, we prefer it to be completed by October fifteenth. If it's not, do we want them to hold over till spring or do we want them to? Just take a chance and see what the weather is or is October fifteenth a drop dead date? I would say the temperature is more of a.
Temperature is gonna start, yeah.
Temperature goes below. What is it forty-five or something? Paint doesn't stick. That's regular paint. I don't know that.
Well, metal paint's worse because metal's gonna hold the. Hold the cold lot longer.
Well, then we need to change that date or the temperature or something.
You're really. Uh, you really, really want that metal surface to be fifty or better.
Well, do we wanna put that in there? That painting is allowed as long as the metal surface is fifty and rising?
Yeah. Yeah.
Then we don't, we won't say it's gonna be completely fire. We say anything will be allowed as long as.
Yeah, I think that works.
Mm-hmm. Um, metal is one of those things that's tricky. Can't be too hot and it can't be too cold. It's really just gotta be.
Mm-hmm.
What's too hot?
Seventy.
Okay. As long as metal surfaces between fifty and seventy degrees Fahrenheit.
I mean, it can be, it can be warmer, but what's gonna happen is you're applying it. It's gonna dry as soon as you're hitting it and.
So in terms of the.
Really want it to dry too fast because then it's not gonna do what it's supposed to do. On the metal.
I did ask them for experience painting metal buildings, just so.
They'd hopefully know what they're doing.
If they haven't done it before, then we might not wanna hire them and they're half price and just. I don't know, a better way to ask that question or something.
I think, yeah, having it put in it however.
Painting is allowed as long as metal surface is between fifty to seventy degrees Fahrenheit.
That sounds great. Instead of the completed.
Because that way.
I guess we still want it done by.
Well, we should thinking if we, I think it was fifteen percent of a drop dead date and winter comes early, then. You know, maybe they could commission May of next year and it's a lot of huge deal.
Right. I think we could put. We could put in. Completed by, after we have that sentence, we would have completed by. All right. And thirty-first.
Completed by July one.
July one. That would be fun with me.
Yeah, yeah.
Go.
Yep.
Right.
Those are anything else there?
Um.
The contract, we need to require the contractor to one either stuff for a year.
Um. Yeah, I would do, I would do a year.
Okay, yeah, great. Right. We feel ready to approve this? If so, I will make, I will make a motion to approve. Just mix it up. Does anybody wanna second that with the correction changes? Yeah.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Lovely. Okay, we have the official Morton Building.
It has a request from Morton Building to sign off on, sign off on it and take possession.
So weird.
Is there anything that we don't know about it or should know about it?
So, so we sign off on it, we take possession of it. What is? What is? What's the warranty on this thing? What's the warranty on the electric? What's the warranty on the building? What's the? I mean.
Pretty hefty contract.
Contract about it.
I just wanna know that we sign off on this thing and God forbid, something happens in a month or two or six months and, you know.
Do we wanna wait until our next meeting to do this? And we can all review the contract? Quite.
Pull up contract, quick look at it, which should be a section.
I mean, taking into, I mean, I'll be this mainly, but taking into consideration who did the electric, kinda like the. I know everything probably seems good. And it probably is totally fine.
You're the one using it. You have any current concerns?
You should probably be. Section or someplace.
Then should have been bigger.
Is that under warranty?
So small.
We could, but they want, I mean, we could all review this. If you want, you find it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, and they copy so you can already sometime you're gonna do it out.
I'm not reading this out loud.
But. There's a more than one page. What's not covered? Damage caused by use of the building for purposes other than kind of just designed. Look at all these things. There's more things not covered than are covered.
Remember, remember.
My house insurance. Yeah, you don't know what house insurance, when you don't have coverage until.
Until you need something.
Yeah.
Wait.
Our basement flooded earlier on. Like nine inches of water came in from the well back through the drain pipe to nine inches. The minister had just busted like on Wednesday or something.
Yes, that didn't work out.
Well, no, actually, an attorney said, well, think how much water you would have had if he hadn't busted.
There you go. There's one way to look at it.
And so we didn't know it wasn't covered. If a pipe just broke, the damage would have been covered, but because it came in from the outside.
Sounds like you should have had an exorcism on it instead of.
Oh, you could have added that in. Well, you didn't tell us anything about it, so it's like. I'll get this together. But this is originally that goes back.
So there's warranty stuff for fifty years, thirty-five, twenty and five.
We just need to keep this, uh, like in the office if something happens. Look at it, be like, before you fix it, take a picture.
Have a copy in here.
Right.
I got one in my hand.
Yeah, it's like with the trucks. Is that covered by or not? You know, I wonder.
Little binder warranties.
Mm-hmm.
Saltwater. Fire, flood, lightning or wind. Don't cover warranties for anything that components or parts not manufactured or installed by Morton.
So one of the electric.
Not looking at, I'm not seeing any electric.
Well, the electric.
I think they said they. They guaranteed it through here or something. Right.
It was through Morton, so it would still be.
Under their warranty.
Under their warranty.
But I think it's like four years or something.
Yeah.
Garage doors and everything to do anything to be worried about.
No, if anything does fail, I'll just record it and if it's possible to.
I'm gonna do that too.
Do something about it.
And then put this back in.
All right. Yeah, just keep the copy over handy. Be something nice.
It was a good call, Kevin.
Thanks.
Look at that, you know? Forget about warranties. That's why they sell, we'll actually use this.
Anybody getting cold, can I ship this one?
Yeah.
That's supposed to be maybe like a couple of days. Yeah.
Theoretically, for like a few hours in the middle of the season.
Thirty-six. The humidity is, I just want days that I pray for humidity. That would be awesome.
All right. So having read the warranty, do you wanna go ahead and sign off on this?
Yeah.
It's, do we have to sign up on this or is this just?
It says owner.
Yeah.
The owner after completion. Let's spend down this part.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
All of us or just you?
Um.
I think it's just you.
You should all do it.
We'll just scramble all our signatures in there. I signed a whole warranty thing, so if something happens, it is on me kind of.
You signed it.
Yeah.
Thirty-first? August.
We do need to vote. Make a motion that, I make a motion that we. Prove the request for sign off on the Morton Building. And take possession of our town garage. Seconded, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Right. Right highway, Eric, you're up.
Um. Being, let's. Been spot grading here and there, um. Shouldering is done. That's gonna get that finished up the other day. We're working here and at the fire station, we're almost. We would have been done today, but I won't go into the story, but we're almost done. Um. We're working on a very high connected segment up in the Gulf. And it shouldn't take long to finish that one either.
Um, upper Gulf Road.
I think so.
Okay.
I don't know which one's which.
Goes up to Toby's farm, upper Gulf.
Yeah, it's on upper Gulf.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get them.
I got, I got somebody emailed and wanted to know what was going on. I said, I don't know, Eric hasn't said anything, but now I can tell him.
But yeah. Yeah, that's it. Easy. That's way easier than I thought it was gonna be. Um. The septic tank warning light came on in the garage the other day, so. Who would we like to have? Pump that up.
Wait a minute.
He filled that up in a year?
Yeah.
Well, we put a little one in, remember?
We took possession in January, so since January.
Well, the, we set the. We'll see what they, when they pump it to see how much is in there, because we set the tank, we set the flow pretty darn low, I think. So if he pumps out. You know, six hundred gallons and he goes, you can move that up ten inches. Then we'll move it up, but I figured it, we were gonna err on the side of caution on that one.
Yeah.
Um, so.
It did come on.
Do we have, it's under? Ten thousand, do we still need to bid out or do we?
I think it's only like six or seven.
Right.
So, uh, right, A1, Hubbard's.
Yeah, we have an account with.
Scrippers.
Hubbard's already, I think, I think. I don't know if the trash and the.
Right, who does this subject here?
We haven't had this one pumped out in, since it was built.
That's, where's it, where's it going?
Well.
Right, there's a leach field, yeah.
My grass is doing so well.
Um.
You wanna have the road crew help me try to find it on the corner of the building and I hope we can put the porch over it or the other thing. A lot later. Um. Scrippers or A1, I mean, I would call around a little bit just to see, because some of them charge a hundred bucks more than another and.
Do we wanna?
Well, if we're getting them comfort one, should we uncover the town office and have them do both from the same day? Probably.
If we can find it.
Yeah. Well, it's right out here on the corner. It's not, it's not ours. Just might be deep because that's what they did twelve years ago, fifty years ago.
Um, do we feel comfortable authorizing Eric to? Yeah.
Yeah.
Choose someone? And do it?
I can do that.
By consensus? Yeah, great.
Yeah.
And that's all that we're gonna afford. Um, can you also authorize the state for the, the county town lieutenant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Love to find the Eric. The other.
All right.
A little witching stick out there to find it.
Right, I just remind them to bring their, uh. Tape measure, so they need to draw a map after they find it. We've got one.
Yes.
We're smart, we'll do a. Manhole riser.
Oh, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
That's all that would be great.
Right, anything else for Eric?
I just out of curiosity, are the little gravel piles next to the culver on the hill coming, what is a cop hill coming into Tenmouth where? The paving happened? Are those gonna go away?
Yes.
Okay.
I forget. Why they're there. Oh. We had to cut when that was gravel before we paved, we had to cut out the gravel and then put it into pavement and then that's where.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And we took it out. I didn't have a truck, so we'll clean it up. It's gonna go away.
All right, thank you.
Anything for you, Kevin?
I'm good.
All right.
Really, the thing I might add is, could we encourage the road crew to tidy up? The town garage lot down there, it's getting kind of overgrown and.
Mow the.
We get a chance to.
Do we have something that can mow around there?
Yeah.
Do you have a mow?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Where's our tractor? It's not here yet.
Not here yet. So he's waiting for filters.
All right.
Oh, is that what he's waiting on?
Waiting on filters. They had an ag fair and a bunch of other stuff going on, so they have.
Uh.
That big, uh. Greenwich Fair was last year.
Um.
Salesman was there. But.
So it should be coming fairly soon then.
Yeah, he said in the next couple of weeks.
You wanna do that when you get it? For test run?
It kinda goes in that same.
Great. Anything else? No, great. Um. Financial reports.
Or information reports, there's just the warrants and orders and warrants and others.
It's fine.
Nothing jumped out at me.
No.
Trying to check when, when I just started sending that.
Okay. And that hold on the Hubbard's thing was just. Because.
The hold was for Casella.
Yes.
Casella, usually they bill us for the haul and end of processing. And in the past, when they've separated it, it's got paid more than once. So the practice has been, since that happened, is we hold the. Hauling until we get the bill processed.
That makes sense. Great.
But at least it's, it's in the, in there, ready to pay. So we don't get it and don't get lost.
Yeah.
Waiting for it to make it happen.
Oh, yeah. All right. This ARPA list.
Would you approve the?
Oh. If someone likes to make a motion for proof of warrants and orders, then he makes a motion and approves the warrants.
Second it.
All in favor? Bye, Eric.
Where you going?
I've got no red.
You don't want any more ARPA money?
I gotta go.
Hey, I got that on tape.
Here, that is definitely recorded.
We did get a chunk of it.
I updated this song. Yeah, I think it would be good if you could go through and take some stuff off.
Right.
You're not gonna, sorry, you're not gonna spring. Um.
Like the SCBA gear, you don't need that anymore, correct?
We do not need our stuff for the SCBA, but I'm not saying that we don't need any of it.
Right.
Because we are planning on doing some stuff, but the. Ah, the bulk of it, we don't. Yeah.
So are we getting rid of like two of the two sets or three of the two sets or?
So.
SCBA gear, I'm gonna ask you.
Well, the SCBA stuff we don't need anymore. Um, the. Like structural engineer, electrical work, yes. Flame proof cabinet, I guess, and paint, yes.
Um, could you do anything about the roof insulation?
We. I haven't talked to the guys yet. Last Tuesday, Ray, Ryan and Cameron. Got together at the station and they put together, um, a list of stuff that. Uh, is gonna. Need to be done that we'd like to have done. I have not gotten with them yet. On what that list is.
Okay.
Um, but Sherry. Wasn't there another grant that we were looking at for our building? Maintenance and stuff?
There's a, um, there's a grant coming up from somebody, um, from municipal buildings, but that's. I don't know, I don't know who that is or what that is.
I don't know. Mo was the one that brought that up, I believe.
So was that after the energy?
I think so.
Yes, I met with the girl from Regional Planning Commission today. Um, I didn't know you guys wanted anything, so I can. Ask her if you're a separate entity, if you can apply for it or the town needs to apply for it.
Okay, perfect. Um, so, so taking out the.
But that's, that's energy and heating kind of stuff and.
Yes, that one is, yeah, definitely. So taking out the SCBA gear and leaving in. The roof, the electric, the flame proof cabinet. And. Insulation.
Got six thousand.
Um.
Thanks again.
You can take that in isolation. So what I can tell you, as you're in that, if it's listed, the hundred and seventy-seven thousand, you've allocated a hundred and seven, so you've got about seventy left. So what I can tell you, as you're in that, if it's listed, the hundred and seventy-seven thousand, you've allocated a hundred and seven, so you've got about seventy left. To play with.
So roof insulation is structurally feasible.
This is the total cost of power to the old creamery, thirty-eight hundred instead of the sixty-eight hundred?
Yes, that's what the book given.
Press that one in.
Matt said he was gonna give me a price on doing the. Electric. What needs truck on its own electric.
Maybe it would be worth.
So it might be if you just cross out some stuff and wait till for two weeks so that you can get this.
Yeah.
Part of that and do stuff, but.
Right, so we can.
Are you gonna spend anything on recreation?
Um. I can't remember what the low cost measures were. Picnic tables. And.
Volleyball.
Well, you could probably take off volleyball.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we can take, we can cross those off, yeah.
And you can leave the, for now, you can leave the low cost measure.
Right, leave and take out the outside seating.
Yeah.
With the low cost measures incorporate, didn't somebody break their ankle at our last meeting?
Good, um, that was up at the community center. Needs to be reflectors up there on that culver.
Yeah. She actually broke it.
She okay?
Yeah.
Um, so. As far as the old creamery is concerned. Um. What are, what were you looking at allocating ten grand for them?
We can. Cross that, the real estate transaction, sorry.
Um.
Well, we were hoping. After what the old creamery committee met on Sunday.
Yes.
Um. And we were hoping that that ten thousand was gonna help us with the ramp and fixing the storage room on the inside.
Yes.
And we thought we had enough money to do the claps on the other side, but it turns out.
No.
We don't have money for the claps, let alone hiring somebody to take them all off and put them on again.
So.
We were hoping that we could. Get some more ARPA money and also maybe talk to the select board when you do the budget is budget some money every year, five thousand or something, so we can keep working on it.
So. Um. I personally would be on board with allocating some more money toward that creamery, um, because. Of that side. This is really bad. And it, I mean, we've put so much time and effort into it now. It would be kind of a shame not to do it.
I calculated, oh, a year or so ago, what the old creamery committee and the historical society had come up with. You know, we spent forty, between forty and forty-five thousand, and of that, less than four was town money, taxpayer money. It was that much to get to where it is now.
Right.
Um, is there any, is it listed as a historical building? Is there any like grant money for that anywhere?
No.
Yeah.
Um, we've, we've gone beyond that.
Yeah.
We have to follow very protocols.
Yeah.
At the very beginning, when we were talking about it, it was like, you know, two hundred thousand dollars to bring it back up and we decided we just do it just now and fix it as we can, so.
Yeah.
So. Just the siding alone on that other side is around like ninety-five hundred?
Yeah.
And that's not having anybody install it.
Right.
So. I was thinking about this today. If we. Dumped it. Up. To twenty thousand. That would still give them the money to do the ramp and the other thing and maybe. Get the siding installed.
That would not mean. I'm just trying to think of like. I think it'd be helpful to know what the fire department is gonna need or request, so we have that number to kind of play with. With this other number, it feels like the old creamery and fire department are the two like.
Hmm.
Groups who want to make use of this, so. Um, and if we wanna put any into our capital building fund. Um. For our next meeting, could the fire department and the creamery fund just e-mails beforehand or email Gail beforehand?
We can figure something out.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that will give me a chance to get with Ray, Ryan and Cameron and see what they figured out.
And I'll get in touch with, uh, regional commission.
Yes. Perfect.
Work money, see if you guys can do that.
Great.
What was the? What was the grant that this gentleman was here the other night and he was talking about that ARPA money that was like?
Regional.
That's mechanical, sorry, municipal. In minutes.
Right.
Municipal technical assistance.
Would that, if we were going to be working on hard infrastructure for the town, like we had talked about doing the, um. Like if we were gonna upgrade the transfer station, could we update? Hard infrastructure and include our fire department in that? Bit?
The fire department.
Yeah, maybe we'll ask it.
I mean, he said think outside the box, but he.
We just keep it as like a hard infrastructure upgrade.
So the only thing you gotta keep in mind there is that the, the fire department is a separate entity from the town.
Right.
But still.
Hard infrastructure for the town.
Right. It still serves.
Right.
The town. So, yeah, I will, uh, definitely ask him that.
And that's cause the fire department owns their building. You're your own thing, yeah.
But back in nineteen sixty-seven, the firemen didn't want the select board.
I wonder what to do.
The select. Men to tell them what to do with their fire department, so they found formed their own entity.
There you go.
And it served in other. Um, so going down this list, we can cross out salt and sand.
Uh, well, right, this is it. Was that in terms of like putting that money into the municipal fund?
Well, I, I'm just going down through and seeing what you actually wanna fund.
Right.
So. You know.
I think we can cross out.
I'm raised, no.
We can cross that off.
Um.
Were you thinking the holdback funds were the?
That was just to hold back in case something came along after you had it allocated and it was a really good idea, so you have a little bit of money left over.
We did, we did cybersecurity.
Yep.
Heat pumps for town office.
We can probably. Cross that off because of the grant I was working on today with that, with Matt and Ryan. BGS is supposed to be coming up with a plan and I said we wanted to look into heat pumps, so I think. It would be an outright grant, I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
You could have level one or level two. To. Do an assessment of what you have. And level two assessment was if you're gonna spend over a half a million dollars. And I said, no, I don't think this is gonna be us.
Be another one.
So to me, that allowed you to get loans.
Right.
If you're gonna spend more than a half million, so I'm thinking under a half a million, they're gonna.
Right.
Pretty much provide the thing, so I'm, I'm thinking that we can probably make that go away.
Okay.
Um. So we got a chipper, we got the owl, we got the iPad.
Yep.
We got the pack there. Um, the upgrades to the town office and. The generator. What I have to figure out with the generator is. We got a grant. To cover half of that.
Yes.
And so we're gonna use the ARPA money to cover the other half.
Yep.
So I think we have to pay everything out and then it gets reimbursed, so we have to figure out. If that half that we pay comes back into the ARPA pocket of.
Oh, interesting.
A lot of money, so.
Right.
Right.
How does that track?
Yeah, I, I have to talk to somebody about how.
Okay.
How that needs to be, you know, it's easy enough to write a check, pay it and buy it, but when it comes down to the.
Actually getting that back.
Um, and so then we also need to figure out if we wanna put something in the capital building.
I would like to.
I think what we, in my mind, it's the fire department, the old creamery and hopefully some leftover for the capital building fund.
Yep.
Can I ask you a question? Um, at one point, there was talk of improving the air quality in the town office. So that those of us that can't go there maybe could go there, and I don't know if that fell off. You know, got distracted somewhere or it's included in there, but I thought we were gonna do something with air. Quality, air circulation, air filtration for the town office.
So I will have the, the people that are coming to do the assessment. I'll add that to the, their list of things to do.
Okay, thank you.
Or.
Because if the board did authorize.
Knock out some windows.
Yeah, and I think if we update this list to just. We can just get rid of the things we've crossed off.
Some basic stuff and.
Yeah.
It's, you'll have a.
A better idea, yeah, cause I think it is, it's weird. Yeah, I was gonna say, for our next meeting, could we get a cleaned up one?
Yes, that's, yeah, and I think the total is one eighty-one instead of one seventy-seven, but the one seventy-seven might be what's left over at what we spent last year.
Right. Yeah, well, that sounds, we've made progress at least.
So did we, did we take out the tree ash or ash or?
I, I did, cause according to the asterisks, we, they aren't needed anymore. Well, it was sort of, this is what, when we purchased the. Mower.
Yep.
It was, this was the line item that we were.
Yep.
Going off of was that the request was for sixty-five thousand.
Yep.
And that is a similar machine that we bought.
Yep.
So, yes, we did do that.
Perfect.
All right, anything else on that or? Move on? We have this long. Unvisited.
Actually get to it and not just.
Yep, we've got this list, it's been two pages. It's great. All right, follow up to do this. Uh, we should have done this with Eric. The first one, well, has that happened or is that this winter?
It has not happened.
Okay, so this is. One hundred twenty-three, twenty-four. Well, so, two, three. Sound garage, we can.
We can. Well, I don't think it's been finally graded yet. I think it needs a little.
What's that, the driveway?
The driveway.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not done. Um, yes, my brother, it's not done.
All right.
Uh, my brother's got some concerns with the water and where it's going.
In the. Running into the brokers, it running down onto his lawn.
Running down onto his lawn. It's not really going onto his lawn. It's. So you're driving down the driveway, the water's going this way.
Hmm.
Toward his place. And kinda just sitting out. There.
Do you mind talking to Eric about that?
Yeah, I will. Yeah.
Just in case it's something that's an easy fix of just, you know, that.
Well, I think it was one, I think it was the thing that was gonna get fixed when the driveway finally got.
Ah.
Done.
Done.
And I've been holding off on talking to him about it because the driveway isn't.
Maybe we can make that driveway, admit, put driveway in there, so that's what's left is the driveway.
Yep.
All right, salt and sand shed. While we've started this.
We did the contract.
Yep.
We're supposed to know something by December, right?
Yep. So do you wanna just update that to December twenty-three?
What they call that? Just, they have a name for what they were gonna.
I like that, what that would be.
The product that they were gonna give us in December was.
Preliminary plans?
Uh. Preliminary proposal? I'll have to look it up. I'll try and find them.
All right. Well, we have slightly more progress for the ash trees, I feel like. One, having this saw blade will help us do more ourselves, and then. We have this grant to remove dangerous trees. So.
And we're gonna review that, our fee for that on.
September.
Yep. Um, what's interesting is. I had asked Eric to talk to the company that he was talking to about the RFP, cause I thought it was kinda overboard.
Yeah.
And he said, and he showed it to them. They sent something back totally different and I got a bid in the mail today.
So weird.
I haven't opened it, but it's a bid, but we haven't sent out the RFP, so I guess it was some miscommunication.
Oh, man.
Eric and these guys about.
So they thought they were bidding on it.
I don't know.
Um, so they can't put a bid on it actually until after we. Get the contract on the state design and.
Right.
But I'll try to update that to for September fourteen.
And then, uh, we need to develop a notification plan. I'm thinking maybe we just come up with a letter. That goes out to the landowners who were, whose trees were cutting down. I thought Dave Furtzall was working on that, or am I wrong? So maybe we'll.
I don't think David was gonna do that. I think he was leaving that up to the town group.
Okay.
I think I will send something to. Hmm. Probably it'll go to the Vermont local roads, just to see if there's some other town that has something already that they have.
That's a good idea.
The clerks and treasurers probably won't do that, but the local roads will.
Okay.
Um.
We'll put that in our, as our idea, local roads.
With David being the tree warden, he might wanna be involved.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we can see if there's a template that exists and then just show him and see if it's.
Yep.
Doable.
Yep.
Highway equipment fund list. Uh, we, Kathy just updated it. Um, maybe we can review that. If you could email these two, that updated.
Yep.
List before the September meeting and we can look at it. Um, I asked her to add in the. Uh, mower and the chipper. So that we could see what that looks like.
Right, that's, and that was something with things that Eric had about saving all the money, forgot to put one in, if you're gonna have.
There shouldn't be a whole. Right. There shouldn't be a whole lot of upkeep and maintenance to the chipper. I mean, it's.
Right.
Not much to it.
Right, you have to sharpen the teeth on occasion or no?
Not with the amount of blades we got for it. We should have enough blades. And the, and the people we bought it from gave us two sets of new blades and, and then. Eric bought another set, and it, so each set has two sides.
Mm-hmm. So we'll never.
Should be good for a long time.
Talking, Eric was like, I don't think we'll need to deal with the, like that blade attachment should never, mm-hmm, should just go.
Yeah, I mean.
But the, the tractor and the mower.
Yeah.
Is you're gonna need budget money for maintenance or that.
And we made the assumption we would be looking at purchasing another used piece of equipment, so that number looked a lot better than buying like a brand new one, so. That's the number that.
And then.
We put it in.
And, and in the overall scheme of things, one of the reasons that the town. Hired it out was we didn't wanna have a tractor sitting there for fifty weeks of the year. It takes two weeks to, to the mowing, right, something, so.
Right.
You know, they, they are gonna use it some in winter time to cut trees and things like that, so you'll get a little more use, but it should last.
Yes.
A very long time if you're only using it.
Especially now that it has a.
As long as we keep it undercover and.
Yeah, well, I mean, would it be beneficial if we did a second mowing in fall and cut back the brush a little bit more? And that's.
But typically, like Dan Allard is going through the second. We do try to get one done by June thirtieth, so it gets all the poison pricing. And then another one is done in August or September, just around the.
Yeah.
The tar roads here, um. Dan is doing right now.
Mm-hmm. What's nice is with the saw attachment is we can go a lot.
Further.
Higher and farther.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, it sounds like, and I'm hoping that it's gonna be something that's utilized. A fair amount, I mean, but yeah, with the use that it is looking at. I'm kind of anticipating it lasting us for quite a long time.
Yeah, well, I think, I can't remember what we put, I think you said it would last fifteen or twenty years.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we need to replace it. So yeah, you guys can look at it and look at those numbers and see, maybe you have more, you know, you could see pushing it further. Makes the numbers look even better, so.
Right, you do want to remember to add in extra maintenance. I mean, I called Rockingham and talked to the road foreman down there and he said they had spent seventeen thousand dollars on repairs and.
On the tractor.
On the, yeah, everything.
Prior to turning it in.
Yeah. But that they used it this spring, I mean, they had it fixed last year. They used it this spring and decided that they were gonna, you know, upgrade because it was twenty years old.
And Rockingham has the money to do that. Yes.
A call to find out why they sold it, if there was some things. That we needed to know, that we weren't being told by a salesman because you can't trust salesmen.
No.
So I, I think it's good for them.
They're all on the up and up.
Alright, so, uh, we'll look at that at our September meeting. We can say who Kathy did it again. Um, Spring Road Maintenance Practice Policy. Uh, did we ever get?
I have not.
Local roads, maybe you could ask them.
I have not come across anybody.
Nothing.
Not anybody that is willing to share anyone's.
Yeah, did you reach out to Chris Stat?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Sorry, probably gave me that information and it's.
Well, if I could remember, uh, Jacob Gaffier, he's actually the general manager for District One. It's, uh, G A U. T H I E R or something like that, but he's the general manager for District One. And I believe any of the dirt roads that the state maintains are all in District One. So he might have some ideas.
Okay.
What's his first name?
Jacob.
Jacob. Cuz usually it's the state ones are first name dot, last name.
Yes, yep. And if you Google like V Trans General Manager District One, it might even come up that way. Or V Trans District One Office Beddington, he might come up there too. Or reach out to me, I have his email too.
Did we talk to, like, anyone at, um. Woman Stephanie who works with Eric with like all the stormwater management? I'm just wondering if they have anything.
Well, I reached out to Vermont Local Roads, which is.
Included in that.
It's, it's under V Trans Wings. It used to be a separate entity, but a lot of road commissioners and. Town roads or managers that manage the roads are on that.
And I wonder if, you know, the Eric shared the, like, the. Whatever's in them handbook for ditching. Is there something similar in the handbook for managing dirt roads that we could just sort of? Review and paraphrase?
Possibly, I mean, most of the state maintained roads are paved, but maybe.
Just in case there's nothing that exists, that could be a place to pull from.
It varies from town to town. I mean, some towns, I think they relish having mud. You know, oh, roads are closed, we got three foot of mud. You don't have to have three foot of mud, right? What you can do, steps you can take.
Yeah.
But there are towns that just, you know, don't do those steps. And you don't have to do them all at once, you just do them incrementally.
I don't think Shrewsbury does. I think Shrewsbury is one of those towns that likes their mud.
Oh, there's towns up north with the school bus, if they like to be on channel three because the school bus can't get.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, different soil types, I mean, everything at play. Alright, Old Town Garage, we could change this to RFP for hiring.
Well, that's.
Contracting out. Controlling up painting.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Road grill repair. You just cross out your paint exterior.
So.
This was both for the done, winter and spring of twenty-three, and now it's almost the fall, so.
I can run down there someday, the next week or two and fix the corners of the building. It's really not. To it.
Thanks, Kevin.
Well, I mean, this, this straighten it out, throw some screws in it, and it's gonna be good.
I think he who damaged it should be the one that fixes it.
Um, who damaged it? Did Eric do it? Ready?
My understanding, yeah. But if you're willing to do it, thank you.
Well.
Yeah, there's not.
Be like. Could we, I would be comfortable with you talking to Eric about it, and if there's a road crew member who can help you with that. That you can pull, help you fix it.
Okay.
That would be, uh, how do you feel?
Well, you're gonna be down there painting in a few weeks, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, if I end up doing it, that was one of the things I was just kinda gonna throw in there and do it.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll wait, um, we'll just. It's getting.
One way or the other, it'll happen. That side is gonna be tweaked back around a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, we certainly need to get them.
Yes, yeah, I'm not doing that.
Alright, so.
Transfer station.
I've got some more components to it.
Yeah. A lot going on there.
Are we gonna keep it or?
Right, did the, they meet, did the?
They, they met once and they have tasks and they're gonna meet again at the end of September.
Okay, great.
And see what comes back. They're looking what other towns are doing.
So.
We'll.
December.
Maybe we'll wait to hear back from that committee and also to talk to Devin again about the possibility of using some of that to help. You know, upgrading it.
So that might be. I can tell you that we did, you mentioned compactors. We've talked about compactors. And the fact that they're very expensive, they're expensive to run, and they only get like six ton in the container.
Yeah.
We get that squishing it with the back on. So that's why we did not get compactors ten years ago is because what we're doing was the amount of.
Yeah. But the compactors make it so there's less, like. Wildlife can't get in them as easily, correct? Like, there's, like, part of our issue is we're having, like, bears and rats and birds.
And the birds have seemed to be, being scared way that that's.
Okay, yep.
One of the things down there, so.
That what tells her?
Yep.
Okay, I'm like.
Christmas tree down there.
That makes sense now.
Well, we'll wait.
So those steps are, you know, those.
Steps are taken. Great.
Um, so that's more of an October review, but?
Yeah, October. Um, shade tree policy unhold still. I don't really know. There's not much pressure for that, so. David comes back, I'll see if he has any interest in working on it.
Well, I think the shade trees basically were for the rotten ones in the Burlington.
Yeah, places that need.
We actually have shade trees.
And like, honestly, there are some trees, there are some trees. Up there that need to be replaced. That big elm tree on the end, we should look at that. It split that big branch off last year and now it's just not doing very well.
Usually when they start falling apart.
An elm tree, so.
Yeah, but they're by Ramsey for Kathy and, you know, but it's, I think it got hit by lightning.
I think it, yeah, it doesn't look very good, and at some point it is gonna be a liability, so.
But you don't need a shade tree policy for that. Is this a healthy tree? Should we have it? Where all of the children are running around underneath it and.
Right.
Probably shouldn't put tire swing on it.
Yeah, um, roadside right of way wood policy. Have we? Feel like we talked about this again.
Spring of, let's try fall, that'll give me a month.
We could, I mean.
So.
Fall of twenty-three.
I mean, that's part of in conjunction with what we're gonna do with.
Right, yeah, with this grant.
Start cutting all the trees along one forty.
Which is sort of like part of that letter, right?
One forty is a long stretch of road, but there are other places that we have other trees on, so at some point they'll like to. Put that on the.
Well, and maybe, you know, we can have, we can have a letter that we can have that can be sent out to landowners. That's just, you know. We can personalize part of it, but there can be a template of being like, town is gonna be cutting trees on your land. You have the option to keep the wood for yourself or we could write it up, but something like that. Alright, Traffic Study Committee. We did do all those things and we did.
Had another meeting, yep, and we're gonna meet again. Uh, when are we meeting again?
You are meeting on the twenty-sixth. Um, the guy from Regional Commission, come on, can come on.
Yep, so.
I had to switch the, I forgot that the Solid Wasting, Sycamore Committee is moving on the twenty-sixth, so they had written down the twenty-eighth. So you guys.
So we can put. So.
Study Committee is still working on the traffic.
There you go.
Still working on it.
Probably have something in the October meeting.
Recommendations and they got rejected, so now. Some of those recommendations should be followed, but, you know, we need to take a serious look at what the committee recommended and some of those steps.
Yes.
I think there's a grant coming in the springtime for the feedback signs.
Oh, that's exciting. I think those are highly effective. At least they work on me, so I'm hoping.
Well, that's why we're getting that.
Well, and I believe the state did a study and those were more effective than. Almost even having a cop shit in there cuz, you know, big class and then.
Right, and then so. Alright, uh. Oh man, there's so many pages. Alright. Yeah. Cross one off.
We were forgetting some of these things.
Yeah.
If they have a list, then you can say, oh, yeah, I was supposed to do that and.
Yep. Um, the continuing continuity of operation plan. How's that going?
Oh, it's just dead in the water.
Perfect, then.
Is that something you want help with, or is that something that, like, is there a template that exists for, um, from other town?
Started it and I had some information from Eric about some of the highway stuff.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's intended to be done by one person.
Right, right.
It's typically done by a bigger community where you have a whole bunch of department heads get together. How much one's gonna happen, so. I have to figure out how to scale it back to town our size opposed to.
Right, one thing I was thinking, I was just thinking if there's a grant, like an emergency management grant or something, it would be.
Well, I think.
Or is it even as simple as, okay, this is when I send out the tax bills and this is how I send out the tax bills.
Well, I think it's, it, it propped up at the beginning of COVID, and so if. Eric and Ron both got sick, who's gonna plow the roads? Or if I got sick and died in COVID, who's gonna pay the bills and do that kind of stuff? It's, it's planning for.
Right.
Someone gets hit by a bus.
Be more apt to get hit by a pickle truck and Tim at the bus.
But is it something that would be helpful for there to be, like. A paid person to help do it or, um, a grant, if we could find a grant to help pay for it, I don't know. I was just thinking that in terms of emerging, we were doing something with emergency management and it made me think of. This could fit into that, being like, you know, it would sort of be an emergency if you got hit by the pickle truck. So having. So having that plan in place would be really helpful, and if there's money available to help make that happen. Or we can make it work within a grant, um. Yeah, it's just something to think about for that plan.
Maybe we put that on the.
Our list.
No, not the article list, on the technical assistance list.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea.
Help us do something like that.
Well, that's a great idea. What is this? What is that M tack or whatever it stands for? Not M tack.
It's just in a minute here. When this full technical assistance. And so I do have to work on some more policies for you guys when we do. A lot of these things are just, again, for much bigger places.
Right.
What we really need to do is get a good counting and procedures made and, you know, we made several staffs at it and there are.
Yeah.
Steps for the bookkeeper to do, how to do all the payroll and the accounts payable and that kind of stuff, but.
Yeah.
You know, I need to sit down and say, well, you're gonna do recordings, this is how reporting is done, this is what you do for vital records. In my spare time.
In your spare time.
Maybe we'll put that on the MTA list.
Yeah, maybe we could just.
What kind of, what kind of talent do you have there, Devin?
Yeah, how much more can we do?
Maggie O'Brien, who was here today, has all kinds of time allotted to her to help towns do this kind of stuff.
Right, technical assistance.
Yeah, it wasn't, but, but this was the M E R P stuff.
Right, that's what I was thinking of.
She was looking for something, so I thought, oh, come on out here. We sat down and had it done in fifteen minutes. And I had filled all that information out when we did the survey back in April. But now that this, that was for the survey, now you have to do it for the actual application. You have to upload it and download it and sideload it.
Yeah.
So anyways, she was happy to have something to do, so I gave her some.
Well, alright, so there's nothing else.
We can ask about that stuff.
Okay. So we'll think that, we'll review. Again. We had this in review January of twenty-three, should we say, review again in January twenty-four. And then we at least can just kind of skip over it next time. Have it on there, but skip over it till January. Sound good? At the Inclusion Committee, we actually haven't met since you guys were at the meeting.
Okay.
So I have nothing to report, but we will be meeting again. I think we plan to meet in October, so. I was also thinking, uh, just, I can keep reporting, but we don't really have that much to report on. And it could be, we could just have this be, um. Select Board Liaison Updates, cuz we have, we're all a liaison to something and then. That way we can, also, we could put together the traffic study and just have it all as one, or whatever we liaise for. We can have it be an update number on the list.
Okay.
That makes sense?
It was on here originally because no one was quite sure what the committee was gonna do, so they wanted to just track it a little bit more than.
Yeah.
It was a new committee, so.
True, should we have the Recreation Committee? Tracking what they're getting up to, I don't know, um.
Well, I think, what I heard at the Conservation Commission meeting, Recreation Committee is waiting for directions from the Select Board of what you want them to do.
Oh.
So if you want me to put that on the addendum for September.
Well, if we test them with coming up with their vision, and they were gonna come back.
You asked them what their visions were before you decided to create.
Oh, right.
What I'm trying to encourage them to do is survey, ask people to find out what kind of recreation people really want.
Okay.
You know, what their, what opportunities there might be, are they interested in X, Y, and Z, just.
It's so tough to do. Because in towns like this, people have their own property to recreate on. Like in Wallingford and Rottland and Pittsford and places like that, people don't have their own. Acre, two acre, three acre, four hundred acre to recreate on, so a recreation committee. Is almost a necessity, whereas in Tinmouth, Shrewsbury. It's not, because people have, they walk out their door and they can recreate.
Right, but what can, right, what, what space can we create for community, like recreating together? Not everyone has that.
Yeah, not everybody wants.
Well, it might be interesting to talk to Wallingford.
Yeah.
Because Wallingford is much bigger than Tinmouth and they have a recreation area.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
How many people in Wallingford actually use it? You know, they've got two thousand people and fifty people use it.
I know I use it, um.
And so one of the things I think the Recreation Committee could do is come up with a list of where there are things like Wallingford. And I know Robbie goes to Portley and there are places that people are gonna go. I mean, if you're gonna get in your car and drive to the center. You can get in your car and drive to Wallingford and walk the path down there, you know, do other stuff, so. Just find out what you want and what's available and. Everybody wants this, like, find out what everybody wants.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what people have been saying to me.
Yeah.
Um.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that committee should. Do that.
Yeah. I think surveying. Report forum and. Letters, maybe even mailed out letters.
You can, or. Another MTA thing is they said they would help do a community assessment, so maybe we can work that in. They want work and. They wanna help us assist and. But certainly it can get mailed out in tails.
Right. Right.
There are some people that will do Survey Monkey.
Yeah.
There are some people that don't have computers.
Yeah.
They're the ones that maybe would be, don't wanna walk on the roads.
Right.
They're willing to walk around.
Yeah.
The ball field or something, so.
Could we make this, make one line item that says like committee updates, and then we can go through all the committees that might have something.
That's what I was wondering is, right, i- is it unreasonable to ask for an update once a quarter, or on say, or twice a year or something?
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable.
Once every quarter.
Mm-hmm.
So you probably don't want them. All at the same time?
No.
You want them all at the same time?
No.
How many do we have? Can we just get one something, one a month from?
Right.
So now the rec meeting, equity inclusion.
Transfer or solid waste.
Yeah, speed.
Creamery.
Maybe, old creamery.
It's all the waste on the beach.
Right. It'll be once a year, maybe.
I I think what we're gonna do with the speed is once this is finalized. Um, I don't think. We are gonna disband it, I think maybe just keep it. Kind of.
From the back burner?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that way, if we have to meet again.
Right.
We can, the members are still.
You have a bad idea to get updates from the representative to the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Transportation Council. That's shared. Just. You know.
Yeah.
Once in a while.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, you have representatives there, what can they report?
I mean, I'm fine with them writing something if they don't wanna speak, that way we can just read it and we have to date.
Right.
Yeah, just like a letter to the select board that we can review and.
Yep.
Have information. Alright, let's. I just wanna cross some things off, so. Can we combine those two together?
Just add. We're.
No, and then it's just a committee.
Clarifying.
Clarifying, we can just say committee. Updates. And then that can, that can be number three and fourteen together.
It can be.
Thirteen and three, sorry, combined. And there's no other committee thing on here, I don't think, no. I was hoping, but no. Those are the only committee things. Alright. Tech plan. IT review, did we do this?
We did that, you can pass that on.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's funny, we started on. Oh, yeah, I get it. Um.
So my report is, hasn't been much progress made with the, well, we're the thing, it doesn't fall enough. My plate completely.
Hmm.
I'm kind of waiting for our insurance company to get back to us, they were supposed to talk to the schools insurance companies, so.
And do you need a new select board member to do that with you? Kathy did it with you before.
Right.
Um. I.
She did.
Don't know how it would, I, I'm married to a school board member, so I don't know how that would work. Not good for me, but if one of you. Or if you felt like you needed support, um, with that.
Well, let me see if I can check in with Ryan Hill and.
Okay.
Cause it's a different superintendent, this is different, uh. Facilities manager and.
Maybe we'll just say October. Fall, fall over. We'll just leave it open to October or November, we can say fall twenty three.
Okay.
Tim is the. Um. Like, what's his name, Tim?
Tim Hart.
Yeah.
You know him?
Kinda. That will be a few times. Seems like a pretty good guy.
I think he has. A lot to catch up on.
Yes.
I think the last building facilities manager.
Didn't do much.
Didn't do much, and so.
Yeah.
Tim took over everything, started on the corner.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Housing rehab program review. I don't, I I remember doing this, but I'm not remembering what.
Back in the early nineties, we had a. Housing program where we loaned money out for people to fix their roofs or put in septic or wells.
Yep.
And that was nine or ten. Mortgages out there, I mean, we did it with six towns.
Yep.
And all the other towns have gotten their money and they're collecting their own money. Um. And so we have two that are paying, one that's almost paid off. And then we have two that are dormant, but. At some point, we will get the money if the property transfers, so.
Okay.
So you just need that report once in a while.
Once in a while.
It's in the town report, but it's good. That you know that.
Yep.
There was a big pot of money there. Kathy scooped it up and put it in the town garage, there's about five thousand dollars in there right now. There's not much. And when people come in to ask about. A little project, I try to direct them to Navy Works.
Yeah.
In West Rowland, because that's more.
Yeah.
You know, right now, the the select board would have to review applications and there's personal income and all kinds of information like that, since. It's, I keep trying to send them.
Well, that seems like a great.
More help that knows what they're doing, you know.
Has more resources available.
Right, cause you're supposed to have. Different bids to do the work.
Yeah.
And then the mortgage gets, you know, you gotta hire an attorney, because then you need an attorney to make sure that they're signing.
Yep. Okay.
So, yep, that's what that is. So that's semi annual.
Okay.
So considering you've got one of your reports now.
Oh, like, great.
There you go. That works.
Check. Um. I'm building maintenance and repair. We have the emergency.
Outback.
Check.
Electricity on the old. Where is?
Done?
Almost there. Devin has painted most of the east wall, there's a little bit to tidy up there.
Yep.
And we did the.
We repaired the handicap walkway. Um, we haven't painted, but we're doing paint, but. Yesterday, today's before yesterday, I went out and got all of. Brush and stuff away from the building.
Oh, wow.
You could walk around it now if you're brave.
Yeah.
Just before mourned, there's a really nasty rose bush. On the east side of it, I pushed it over as far towards heaven as I could get, but I. A nasty cut on my finger.
Oh, man.
Um, but there is some silver that needs done. Be fixed there, so we probably need somebody to take a look at it and.
Cat.
Plan for some work for. Next spring to repair it. It hasn't been painted in quite a while either, so.
So it does need some more. Spring of twenty twenty four?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll need somebody to look at the windows and.
Yeah.
Does something Ken's interested in doing?
I don't know. I'm hoping that I can get him at least to look at it and.
Yeah.
Give us an idea of what needs to be done.
Yep.
If it's major and, you know, at one point back in the nineties. The thing was falling in on itself. And the the lower walls were like this.
Mm-hmm.
And so we jacked it up, and when we jacked it up and we straightened up the foundation, the walls straightened up. It was crazy. The main thing, this was straightened right up and it was.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
That repair, I did several years, half your old grants and my old grants and.
Yeah, that's.
Little by little, I got fixed up and used it.
Oh, nice.
The little history lesson.
Yeah, that's very cool. Um.
Ah, another page?
I know. Another page.
This is start crossing stuff off.
Well.
That's why we put it off, but that's why you needed a special meeting, just.
I know, it's. This is actually nice, just really have this to do. Um. Okay, so review work plan annually prior to spring project work, uh. I would imagine that would be something we would be doing in the wintertime. With Eric.
Right.
We can ask Eric what timing works, but having fun.
So probably January, February?
Yeah. Or maybe he won't know by then, but we'll ask him what that timing would look like. Year end financials, ideally September.
You will get that on the fourteen.
Lovely.
I promise. You won't get anything else, but you'll have that.
Alright, well, that sounds great, um.
And that, those year end reports include the, the special accounts. I mean, I've already given you.
Yep.
Those, it's just this.
Yep.
The highway and the checkbook need a little bit of tweaking, I can report that. The auditor, one of the auditors found. That, uh. Invoice for gravel had been. We do little slips for which accounts go to, and so it went to the right account for. The. Town garage. But when it hit on the computer, it just went to general highway, so it turns out that the capital fund is gonna owe highway another thirty one hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Perfect.
For gravel for the new town garage, so it's, you know, it's.
Yep.
So I mean, that's one of the reasons you have auditors and they check the accounts and set up, so you look at the check number and the date and who it was made out to and what it was used for and make sure. Goes to the right account and, you know, the check comes back, they look at the cancel check, so.
Oh, wow.
That was. More, more than worth it, they don't get paid none of them. We should do something nice for them, I think.
Yeah.
Um, maybe at Christmas time, I don't think, just.
Yeah.
Make them more appreciation, because.
Yeah, yeah.
Get them a bottle of Jack Daniel.
Um. So these are the agreements that we have to review. Annually, um. We have already gone through the Mill River one. Rutland Regional Planning Commission, that'll be in May.
That has to be by May first, and we should probably change that to April.
Okay. April.
And I think the L E M P is able to.
Okay.
I think it's supposed to be done by. May first.
Our personnel policy would be good to be, just to review and, um. Think we could probably do that in the wintertime?
Good.
Do you have a better idea?
Description and salary ranges and adjustments, probably we should do that at budget time.
Right, so I guess we could review that at the same time, like November.
You know, the personnel policy. Got into difficulties because. You really have one employee that it covers wrong, because Eric and I are elected. And so we tried to do a review of.
It was one person.
It. Right, and but it was just difficult for the. Select Board, Frank and Kathy and, I don't know, who else, somebody else, Stan maybe. Um. Yeah, tried to work through the logistics of it and really, you can have them set goals, but there's not much.
Yeah, but is it covered Glenn also? Glenn and Ronnie?
It would cover Glenn, uh.
And your assistant?
The benefits and stuff apply to.
Right.
The full time, which is, just.
Right.
So I think at one point I was kind of appointed the liaison for that.
Great. You wanna review the personnel policy?
So, just hang on a minute. So. I did speak to Ronnie about that at one time and just told him that if there was anything that. He had an issue with, just to let, you know, he can talk to me about it and then I can relay that to.
The board, in an executive session, usually if it was regarding personnel. Then we can address it.
Yep. He has not, but.
It's good. There's a very legitimate reason for it.
What's that?
He's the only employee, so if he says something, it goes back.
Right, right.
And points as miserable as it was one before, he says anything, that's why he doesn't say anything.
It's tough to.
It's tough.
To handle that, it is. It is, it's really tough to navigate how to do that.
Right, and I think just trying to encourage. Open communication as much as possible, so even if it's just can, reaching out.
Well, even the eight eights.
To see, and then.
Thinking outside the box, if if that was, if Ronnie's position was elected as well, does that change anything?
The, if the select board can actually change the job description of the road commissioner who is elected. You could have them do just paperwork. That's the select board's authority. The commissioners, road commissioners don't have much authority by statute. Um. And you could hire a road foreman.
We could change.
Talked about that in the past, I said, well, you should really probably talk to people at town meeting about it, because. You know, you have the authority to do it, but you might want.
Yeah.
Have a discussion at town meeting about the pros and cons.
Um.
Of electing or appointing. A road commissioner or a road foreman.
Right. Which is something we'd have to vote on anyway, if we were going to change it too.
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to vote on, the select board can do it, if you have the authority.
We have the authority to change the road commissioner from an elected to.
Not from elected to appointed, but you change the job description.
Oh, okay.
So the job description is.
Right, so the road.
A lot of towns have moved to that model where.
Foreman versus commissioner.
The foreman. Does the work.
Yep.
And the road commissioner does the paperwork, you know, fills out the grants and does a lot of paperwork kind of stuff. Planning, not, not out there filling the pot.
Which is like what Devin was saying at the last meeting, was like, if we had. Like a three town commissioner who did all the paperwork and then the foreman.
The foreman actually does.
Would work underneath the commissioner.
So the towns that have gone to that have had, they had to hire two full timer crew then, and so they're just.
Well, when Greg Casey was on the board, he wanted to become the. The paperwork guy. And he was gonna do it like the ten thousand a year, and then he'd have the two full time road crew that were just doing road crew stuff. Because at some point, it transitioned so that there was a lot more paperwork for somebody to do.
Mm-hmm, right.
Um.
The more paperless we go, the more paperwork there seems to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so a number of towns have, you know. Like, Wallingford has a road commissioner. But the road crew. But the road crew, you know, they do the work and Phil Baker, I think is a road commissioner and he. You know, he gets paid normally, but he makes decisions on what to do here or there and just tells the road crew what to do.
Feel like there's like, I wanna, I want another group of people to think about this and.
Well, it's not been thought about discussed in the last ten or fifteen years, so there's there's a thing that failed there.
So.
But it's it's a hard nut to crack.
Yeah.
Because if you look at the last time or when Paulus retired. The select board appointed Kevin Ruane, who ran for the job. Eric ran for the job, he got elected, but he couldn't start and it was a storm coming the next day. He said, I haven't given my boss two weeks notice yet, so the select board had to call. Uh Kevin Ruane and say, hey, Kevin, can you stay on for two more weeks? Because, you know. So it's nice that the select board can appoint somebody to the the road commissioner or whatnot. Um but in this case, the voters rejected who the select board appointed. But then who they elected couldn't start, you know, so you know, it's. It's the pros and cons of both, it's you have to figure out what's what and. I think more and more towns are having some administrators and other people.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much of a cost to the budget that is of going that model versus the model we're on or. Does it equal out pretty much?
Well. I think you have somebody that can do the paperwork for less than it's gonna cost you for six months of.
I'd be interested to know what, cause Devon was talking a little bit about that administrative groups and I'm curious.
I think that's more have administrators and don't be administrators and. We could ask him if it's any road, if any road crews are towns are considering that for the crews.
Yeah. And maybe it's something we. Yeah, put on the agenda.
Something to look at.
To our current road commissioner about this.
I think he will tell you if he changes job description, he doesn't wanna be the rose one.
Well, maybe.
So.
We just have a conversation, even if it's an executive session.
If you're talking about a position. It's not executive session, if you're talking about personalities.
That's true.
So I like Eric, but he's not. Very perceptive to. Criticism or change or. That's. That's, that's a tough aspect of him, he's not, I don't know how to say it, he's just. That's like with you saying that eh that Ronnie, he doesn't speak up and say anything because. Of the the blowback from it. Right, he's just, right, he's just not. He's just not open to criticism, he's not open to. Yeah, he's just not open to stuff like that, which is, I don't know, we talked to him. About it and.
Well, maybe that's worth having, right, that would be the conversation we could have with him in executive session is about that. We're talking about in an open meeting right now, but it does feel like that since we're talking about.
Borderline of.
Right.
Personnel.
Right, I feel like we should. Have that discussion with Eric in executive session. And then I feel like at least trying to open communication is worth trying. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but trying to establish better communication and trust between the crew. So that they trust each other, they trust us to come to us and talk to us and. Um I think it's it's partly about building that, those relationships up and.
Cause it doesn't have to be a negative thing, it can be a.
So let's have that be an executive, which maybe.
Talk about what? Talk about.
We just have it, we'll just have that be something we do in an executive session.
I did, I caught the first part, not the second.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the the personnel annual use, you know, as part of the personnel policy.
Right.
We're supposed to do it once a year or something, that's.
We don't do them.
That's where it got.
Right.
Yes.
Right. But maybe if we we did do them and that was. You know, we changed the policy, so it included.
I don't know.
If we changed it, the policy to where um included us.
Right.
Just talking to them on an individual basis.
Once a year.
Once a year.
And it's kind of what it is now.
We have to change the policy.
Or we just add it, that's to it.
It's just the.
Following through on.
Statute requires, you know, if you're elected, you follow certain things. And if you're hired, there's other personnel policy, things that apply to.
Right. And maybe yeah, find out if it only includes full time or part time employees are also included in that. I don't remember, it's in the handbook somewhere, um job descriptions, line reviews. All of that's usually around the same time as budgets, right?
Yep.
Right.
For November.
Right, November during budget season, November and December is budget finalized in January.
Yes. Highway equipment replacement fund, we just have that updated, where we can. Review it and we'll be able to have it updated for our budget season. Annual review of town policies. We were gonna have like a schedule at one point of when um we have to do things.
The agreement's covered a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And some of the policies, well, you you adopt them, but you need to remember that you have them.
Right. Yeah. The reviewing them.
And I'm trying to bite my tongue, so I don't say you ignored your most recent policy at your last meeting.
What was our policy last?
Oh, the procurement for use.
Oh, yeah. Well, it was, it was a little bit hard, cause he'd already found a piece of equipment.
Yeah, but the policy says you're supposed to decide you need one first and then go look for it and. Sure, by the way, you gotta buy it tonight, well, a month later, we still don't have it, so did we have to buy it that right that minute?
Well, anyways, you know, we used ARCA money and. Here's hoping that all works out great. Is there a easy place to find these, Gail, for us to review?
Um I have lots of stuff on the computer, I don't have them in a material binder.
I mean, if they were.
It's a good time I come across them, I fill them in a. In one of these baskets, basket get covered up with something else and I can't find where I put them, so.
Or even if you emailed them, then we could review them. Do you want the select board to purchase a three ring binder and then you can just.
Oh, I have lots of three reminders, it's finding that.
My desk is full of the same thing. Goes into a drawer and. Never see it again.
It's in a pile that I'm gonna sort, that's where it disappears.
Why was I hanging on to that?
I mean, it's. In our, in our, you know, free time, we'll also look through those and. Anybody has any. Thing we can. About it. What is practices, just like our practices for things, what we do?
Some of the things are practices, some of policies.
Yeah.
Like we used to have a personnel practice, which meant that's what you should do and once we got a formal personnel policy. Now you have to follow those policies and employees are entitled to whatever that personnel policy.
Yeah.
The practice is like a guideline.
Yeah, okay, so. Some guidelines and.
But some of them are named practices and some are named guidelines, so you know, once we get them all together, you can probably. Figure out if you wanna call them one thing or.
Directions or. Right, I think we did the list.
And we got rid of one thing. Next year, we'll get another one.
Right, ah, new business, appoint voting delegate for the Vermont League Cities and Towns annual meeting. Gail, that's normally.
I'm not sure that I'm gonna go, but we need to appoint somebody just in case I do though.
Okay. Would you like to be appointed?
Sure.
Okay, I couldn't tell if that was like, I don't wanna do this, but if you appoint me, I'll go or not.
I will try to go.
Because we could also appoint someone else, I mean, like.
Well. Unusually, the element goes, Glenn Merrill used to go as a select board member.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they've been sending out stuff for months trying to get people to go, so I don't know, but there used to be seven or eight hundred people. They typically have, you know, different sessions for.
On a Tuesday.
Select board members and peers and listeners and they, you know, they they try to do. Yeah, of some sort, but this delegate is to the League of Cities and Towns annual meeting.
Right, to go to the.
They have a meeting, so if you wanna vote on what the policy should be or something, then you have to have a little card.
Yeah, well, I will make a motion that we delegate Gail. I will second that, one favor. Feedback form reviews. Uh members concerned.
I did have somebody come in and read the reviews.
Um miscellaneous correspondence and mail, this is the bid, is that what this was? This Macollo Brothers.
Yeah, I'm just gonna probably return that to them and say we haven't done enough bid yet.
Okay, great.
And did you sign?
I signed all the orders that were in here.
And there was another piece of paper and.
And the letter.
Just sending that letter.
Yeah, it's like that.
This is the. Signing off.
I have to send that to. You didn't sign up here as an owner, Kevin, and sign down here under owner comments.
My bad.
Gotta keep track of you every minute, come on.
All right.
Okay, so next meeting is on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth, seven o'clock, um.
Maureen Fitzgerald Riker wants to come and talk about a possible modular addition to the school for a classroom, so. She's still getting her stuff together.
Yep, she, I have heard about this, we talked about it a little bit.
And Devon Neary is coming back to talk about the M T A, medicinal technical assistance day.
Maybe we can not have the the follow up, we can not have this on the agenda since we just.
Right, that's, that's, that's why we did it, cause we had, we'd just been putting it off and putting it off, so you have to.
Great.
But I would, I mean, I'm working on the agenda already, so.
Yes.
For September.
How many could go to the attendant?
There are, last year there were seventy one kids.
Oh, wow.
But they're not all Timoth kids, because we're part of the support thing, yeah. And the teachers can bring their kids now, and there's kids from Clarendon, and kids from Wallingford, some of Timoth kids go to Clarendon or Wallingford. So that's. Thank you, it's a, it's a mission, but it's a lot of little kids right now, so.
Yeah, it's surprising.
But it's surprising, there's only no kids were born last year, and I think next year there's only one so far that I've heard of. So, you know, Timothy isn't gonna populate the school. Not unless somebody gets busy.
Maybe we should form a committee for populating tonight.
No.
We have seventy one kids. They've taken out the.
Art room.
The art room, you know, that's now a classroom, the art is in the. The gym, music is gonna happen in this church because it's so loud in the community center, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what is the additional room that she wants to do, what's that gonna be for?
A classroom.
Classroom.
Yeah, they have kids' class, used to everybody there. You know, five or six years ago, there was thirty nine kids or something.
Well, I was wondering in another five years if we're back down to.
Right.
It's like a mobile.
Okay.
Unit.
Right, they could come and go, but but come, sometimes those things tend to be a little permanent, so.
We'll wait to hear what she has to say. I think there's a lot that hasn't been figured out, like all the funding for it and.
I think they have the funding, what needs to be figured out is whether it needs water and septic in.
In the building.
It depends how far, it may depend how far it is from the building, building.
Yeah. And um, right, adhering to ideas.
But it's a grant and it's gonna be spent by next year or the end of this school year or something, so. So, yeah, so she's getting stuff ready to.
Yeah, what questions, I feel like we could, you know, what comes to mind when you hear it? And then we could email her those questions ahead of time to have them answered, be like. How many kids, like.
What age group, because if you're talking little kids, you're not gonna want.
Not little kids, little kids have to be close to the bathrooms.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, you know.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a problem in the middle of the winter.
Right.
The occupancy of it.
And whether there's gonna be, you know, it needs to be, if it's here and. You need a little, the school's here, you need the classroom, you need a little covered walkway or something.
So occupancy of it, um.
Yeah, where it'll be located.
Right, she's got a couple locations and some of that depends on whether it has to be attached to water and sewer or not. And she's having a hard time getting that information from someone.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would almost think that somebody would be dictating her in the school realm of. Whether it needs water and sewer, well.
She's asked agency of education and they say, well, you just have to comply with state rules. So I told her today, so when they tell you that, cause she was talking to the construction people in the agency of education in LA. I says, well, ask them where you find that. Cause if they're like me, or you're like me, you go onto the state's website to try to find something, it's almost impossible.
They're not just.
Yeah, neither's dealing big.
It's all different, so you might figure one out, and you go to apply it to another one and, yep, it's different.
And when we're thinking of the location, another thing is that um her and I were also talking about uh. A separate project would be an outdoor classroom, which could double as like a covered picnic table area by the playground. And they have all the money for all the materials, it's like ten, ten thousand dollars through essentially the school's ARCA money. And I thought it could be a community project, they bought all the materials to put it up.
Right, I think they have money for materials, but not for labor.
Right.
And I think it's the same thing with this building, as they would need. You know, they would provide the building, but the town or somebody's gonna have to provide or making a flat spot for it, or I don't know if it goes on the slab. Or on peers, she hasn't figured that out yet.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of details, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyway. To be insulated, does there?
It's all insulated, it's something that. It's something that Kathy Reynolds said, hey, check this out, efficiency Vermont. Has rated it and graded it for its energy efficiency. I don't know how they keep it warm, I haven't talked about that. Water and septic was more important than.
I mean, I guess from.
A heat pump already installed in the wall.
It could be.
I mean, I guess from the fire standpoint, we're gonna need to know. Fire safety, part of it, water suppression suppression, if there's anything in it that way, um.
Yeah, fire safety would. Cold, yeah.
Hopefully, there's two egresses.
Yep.
I'll see if she can send information ahead of time, I think that's helpful, yeah, so.
And I said to her, this is Tim Hart's job, and she says, yeah, but he's got so much other stuff to do, he doesn't have time to do it, I'm trying to help him. So.
Right, I think there's just like a.
You know, that the property, the school population, and it's projected to be for the next five years is that kind of questions, you know, you're gonna need it.
Right.
Kids gonna get bigger, the little kids gonna. Do it a lot for, you know, but there is waiting lists to get into pre K. Because of pre K, they can come from anywhere, but once they get to first grade, then you have to be Timoth to actually. Get here, like somebody from Rutland can't come and go to first grade here, and the other, other three towns, they could, but not from.
But once they come as pre K, they can stay there, they're kind of like, no.
Not, not unless they, yeah, unless they're from within the four towns in the school district. Those four towns have school choice, but uh within the district. Pre K is the only thing that you can be outside of the school district for.
Well, once you pass that.
Right, cause, cause Beth and Jason's kids came here for pre K, but now they're at Christ the King because they can't go to school. Cause they've overgrown, and somebody dropped out, so Elias can come this year, their youngest. There's a waiting list, so you know, it's.
I mean, it is a good school, it's very highly rated. It's a good one.
Yeah.
Uh anyway.
Anyways.
I can, I made a little list, I'll ask her to have those. That information and if she has, you know, what she thinks is what she wants to put up, can send that information along so we can look at it.
She's trying to get a picture of it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
So um. Kind of changing the subject, for her next month's meeting, I did bring up uh. Prior to finding out it was going on the agenda, I asked Eric what his thoughts were on time, time.
Time clock.
Time clock. He said that it would be difficult to do um. During winter storms, stuff like that. They, they fill out. What they're, what they do, you write, you know, they write down what they do um. So I, I guess between punching a time clock and still writing out what they do, I guess he was saying that it's still, it's just as easy to. Fill it out, the times.
What was the difficulty with?
Except it probably during executive session, we would discuss that.
Yeah.
Why there's a need for it.
Well, let's have that be. Our executive session for next meeting, maybe we have an executive session.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I just.
Right.
Just kind of trying to put it together in my head.
Yeah.
Why we.
We just wanna be careful about, you know.
Yep.
Would it, you know, personnel is hard to talk about without causing. Right, stress. When we need to have to do their jobs, all right, um so we'll have that, we'll talk about that at our next meeting. Or we could go into executive session right now, if you want, it's eight fifty. I drank a cup of tea before. I drank a cup of tea before I.
I was gonna.
I'm gonna be home when I did metal starts to fade at eight thirty, I'll be home by nine.
Finish my coffee.
I'm not asleep last night, but.
Our.
Have a tea, man.
I mean, it does, how, how big's our agenda for next month? Pretty good size, isn't it?
No, it's normal.
It's always, okay. Alright, we can do it next month.
Well.
And that would give me a chance to kinda. Put together. Some benefits to it, you.
Yeah. And you also wanted, wanted to discuss, um, reappointing committee, the process.
Yes.
At some point, just.
Yep.
I think what happened with the E and I committee was not a very clean process, so it was.
Yeah.
He suggested it's not my idea, it's just.
Yeah.
You just have some.
Yeah.
To have some rules for everybody.
Yeah.
Understands going things, yeah.
Yeah, do we have a policy? I mean, I just based it off of state.
No, we don't.
Committee.
Have a policy for reappointing people, or, or committee, some committee members don't want somebody to be reappointed. I think that's what it comes down to.
Conduct, right, what are the expectations of committee members and. And what happens when they're not being met?
Right.
Yeah.
And.
Sounds like we need to make a committee to come up with a policy.
So, well.
Well, if there's, if, if committee, a committee doesn't want a member on there. The committee should vote as a committee and bring that to the select board. It shouldn't be all the committee members contacting you guys behind the scenes and then doing something.
And I will say that this was not the committee's decision, this was my decision. To not re, to, to just make the motion to not reappoint him, to hold him accountable. I didn't expect. It to necessarily go through, but it was my, it was.
It was presented as, the whole committee does not want him on there.
Well, that was true, but.
Well, then that's why you need a process so that.
Right.
You know, everybody understands what actions need to happen.
I think I just wanna make it clear that, like, it wasn't. That was part of my decision-making process to make the motion that I made, but it was definitely my. As a select, it was my role as a select board member in, in how I made that motion and, and I felt that. Right, I guess for me, it's how do we hold the committee members accountable?
So, and that's what we need to figure out. So, one of the things that I would like to do is, is. And not just E and I, it's all the committees, so, so if there is an, an issue arises like that again, it's handled. Within the committee to the best of the committee's ability, if they can't handle it, then it comes to us.
Yeah.
Initially, that committee should try to.
Address it.
Address it, and then it can come, if it fails to come up with a resolution, then it comes to us.
Right, and I guess that also plays into like, you know, personnel policy type stuff, it's like. You know, what do we do when we get complaints about somebody, you know, on a committee or a commission? We're not in charge of them, we appoint them, but how do we? How do we follow through? Is it similar to the feedback form where we take that complaint? And we address it, whether it's an executive session and we just talk about it and decide whether there's action to be taken or not, I don't know. But.
We need to.
That's like a great area of.
You know, well, I mean, there has to be a way of, of figuring that out, I mean, we just need to.
Right, and also how we appoint, right, it's like, do people get to just have a lifetime appointment or after their three years? Is it opened up to anybody and it's.
Well, you get how many vacancies, vacancies you have right now. So if you're gonna start booting people off after three years, I think you need to come up with a plan for.
Careful wording there, right, it's not about booting people off, it's about opening it up to new people, you know. Making it, so it's not just, here's the few openings we have, because everybody else wants to stay on, it's. There's opportunity to volunteer on everything, every year.
And that's how it's always presented is, these are.
Yeah.
These are the positions, and it's not like everybody wants to get reappointed, so you can't do it. It's, when it's announced, when it's announced, it's, you know, do you wanna be offensive or you wanna be on the planning commission?
Right.
And you can express your interest, and the board considers. Oh, back in when we had the first fight about Australian ballot and town meeting. At one point, there was a, to get on the planning commission, you had to write a little resume. And the select board committed, considered the resume of, you know, how to get on the planning commission.
Fascinating.
Yeah, we're.
One day interviewed me for it, it was kinda like a resume, you know.
Yeah.
Here's my day job. Might, might tie into this, I don't know.
Right.
Right, and you know, the, the select board typically has tried to balance the planning commission, so that there's people from all sides. I like to tell the story when. Bo White wanted to put a gravel pit on the east road over there. And so they made it go from seven members to nine members, and they appointed Gunnar Morris, who worked for Boob. And Bruce Anderson, who lived right next door, he was hoping it was going, you know, so they get both sides and.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah.
So it's, you know.
Yeah.
Right. I just see the lights on in here, somebody didn't shut them off.
Oh, dear. Yeah, well, that feels like a whole.
Yep.
Winter project.
Well, it was just a night, it was something.
No, I agree, absolutely agree. I think it's something that maybe the Vermont League of Cities and Towns has some sort of template for, like.
They may.
You know, I'm sure other towns have like, you know, and we do have some of it in our handbook, I just look at.
It's almost like, and, oh, and, and like an ethics thing, like in. In dealing with.
But.
Stuff like that.
Right, but I'm sure we're not the only town that's.
Oh.
Have to figure this out, so.
You know.
Or sometimes some select boards will fire everybody on the planning commission.
Or make them elected, right, that's what other towns, or make them all elected, so they don't have to be in charge of them.
We're on the planning permission, planning commission.
I am, Michael is, my brother Andy is, Rainbow is.
You're all fired, you're starting over.
Yeah, they're caribou.
Yeah.
Lloyd, yeah.
Wow.
That official goes.
That official. He's nine, I mean, people are amazed when they hear we have a nine-member planning commission and everybody's calm.
Mm-hmm.
You forgot Kim.
Kim, yeah, thank you.
Thought I was.
Trying to count them off in my fingers.
Wow.
Anyway.
It's a.
Well, it sounds like a whole big. Project, but. Um. Well, I can reach out to the Vermont.
Meeting comes next, yeah, March, so it'll happen again.
It'll happen again.
It'll get here sooner than you know.
Right. But, yeah, I do agree, and I think, right, first thing is just to see what other towns have, that they're already. Have in place, and maybe we can, we have some language in our town handbook around. The expectations of committees and committee members, um. Maybe we see what other towns are doing and then go from there. Do we all wanna do our own research and then?
Town handbook community operator.
The operators menu, I can't remember what it's called, I knew I wasn't calling it right.
Well, I was trying to figure it out.
I know.
At one point, you said personnel policy, and I don't.
Well.
Why the committee, so I was.
Well, right, I, I meant.
Operator committee.
Right, and I meant in terms of the personnel policy, it's like how we review our personnel. It's also like, how do we, that policy is similar to how it feels like we need to be handling our. Communication with committee members, and there has to be some sort of policy in place that's. Similar to a personnel policy, but for committees.
And subcommittees.
Alright.
So, it would, I'd almost, it would almost be like a chain of command type thing. So your subcommittee has an issue, they bring it to that committee. And if they, you know, and then if it doesn't get resolved there, it comes to us. So I just, I think the select board should be kind of the last ditch effort. To patch it up our relationship. I mean, if you're gonna get divorced, then.
It's like with the dog ordinance, you know, the select board didn't wanna have to deal with. Dogs all the time, there's all the ordinance that the neighbors have to try to work it out, if they can't work it out, they act with the. Animal control officer in the past, it was the constable, and if things can't be resolved, then it comes to the select board.
Yep. Yeah, and I'm, yeah, I see what, I'm sure the. I can't think of anybody other than the Vermont League of Cities and Towns who would have that kind of. Information.
Stuff on their website, probably.
Yeah. Committee policies and procedures. I wonder if Stan, Stan is still answering emails from Tim. He was a good resource for things like that.
Hmm. I mean, how are they doing? Do you ever get, do you talk to Stan ring at all?
They were here Sunday for the opening of your committee meeting, or.
Wow.
Society, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, he's the town manager now in Moncton.
Of course he is, cause why would he stay retired?
He needed to resent me, I think it's half time or something, or three quarters time.
No, it is probably full time. On paper, it says part-time, but Stan makes it full-time.
Yeah, right.
Well, that's something he enjoys doing.
Yeah, I mean. Yep. Yep, it seems to be when you stop, that's when you stop.
Yeah, yep.
Do you think we're stopping, that's a good segue for.
Nine o'clock.
Yep. Your tea wore off yet?
No.
Energizer bunny, you done?
That's what's happening, at the moment I'm horizontal, I will stop.
If the face is like full evening, have the windows open. Very sleepy.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah.
That is.
Right here.
Yeah.
So, and then this thing.
Yeah, I've gotta send that to Rick tomorrow, I gotta send this to.
I will make a motion major, second, all in favor, hi, hi. Nothing.
I'd like to say I'd go home and eat my supper, but I have two teenage sons, so. Chance to say anything being left, it's pretty much gone.
Don't hide stuff in the back of the refrigerator.